Everything is May 1st. At 6:30, I'll start the zoning board of appeals with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Court of Mass General Watch Chapter 38, Section 20F. This meeting is being recorded. First order of business is a continuation of 1253 Horse Neck Road. Application of Bayside Restaurant Incorporated applicant and Nancy Carol Coste owner for finding that expanding the outdoor seating area to include non-deck shelf area approximately 1,800 square feet in front of the existing wooden deck where seating has existed for a long time shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing conforming use to the neighborhood as mandated by zoning by law, Article 5, Section 523. Sublet property is located at 1253 Horse Neck Road, Westport, Mass. And is shown on assessor's map 76 lot 40. So with the applicant's representative come forward. And again, I'll just refer into this is a continuation. So the applicant will provide whatever further information they have. Board will ask questions. And after that, then I'll open it up to the audience. I am going to go read into the record some letters in support of the applicant. This is an email from Jim Krimmons, 66 Third Street, Westport, Mass. As an eight-year resident of Third Street, I can personally vouch for the fact that Katz Five-E in the Bayside Restaurant are neighbors anyone would be happy to have on their street. They actively participate in the upkeep of this former mandated street. They continue to invest in the property, raising its value and ensure that their guests are never a problem for our neighborhood. My understanding is that they are seeking to continue to utilize outdoor space that was allowed under the state's COVID ordinances, but not to add additional seating. For the past three years, they have successfully utilized the space without any adverse effect on the neighborhood, parking is plentiful even during the business times, and noise has never been an issue. I am fully supportive of their ability to continue to use this outdoor space and look forward to enjoying one of Westport's oldest and greatest traditions this summer. Best regards, Jill Krimmons, 66 Third Street. This is, next one is Kathleen. Okay, how would you say this?
Smithsonian.
Smithsonian. 140 West Beach Road, Westport, Mass. I am writing to give my support to the Bayside petition that will be discussed at the May 1, 2024 meeting because I am unable to attend in person as my husband is having surgery that day. The Bayside petition to allow seating where the shelves and fire pitch are should not pose a problem or safety issue as they are not asking for an increase in seating. So capacity and parking should not be a concern because those things are not changing. I've never had a problem getting a parking space when I dine there, and that is quite often. With regard to the possibility of vehicles traveling on Horse Neck Road, losing control and injuring patrons, I believe he would have a better chance getting struck by lightning while waiting for a table. In my experience, vehicles tend to slow down when traveling by the restaurant because drivers are looking at the activity and the energy at the restaurant. Excuse me. The Bayside restaurant has been run by the Carroll family for 50 years and they provide jobs for many residents. The restaurant also provides a beautiful view while patrons enjoy a fantastic meal. I personally would love to sit and look at that view and have a glass of wine while waiting for a table. It is the seasonal business and we should support the local business that provide jobs and give back to the community, which the Bayside routinely does. I strongly urge you to approve the petition submitted by the Bayside restaurant so we all can enjoy our visit to this fine family-run business that is so much a part of the fabric of our beautiful town. The next is an email from Lisa and Robert Whitaker, Third Street. Robert and I, Third Street residents, three houses away from Bayside. For the past seven years, we have lived here and have thoroughly appreciated being so close to Bayside. The establishment is an icon. Patrons come, patrons come for the amazing seafood and beautiful views. The management of the restaurant ensures that the environment is maintained and the atmosphere is pleasant, friendly, and courteous. Bayside is a family-friendly place. It closes by 8:00 or 9:00 p.m. and the noise level has never been an issue as folks go there for an amazing meal and beautiful views. We support the ownership and management of Bayside in all of its endeavors as we know their goals always have the best in mind for all the surrounding neighbors and the community. Getting nothing in here. Next, Chris Schlesinger. As a longtime resident of Third Street, I am writing in support of the Bayside request to maintain their COVID seating. In addition to the space being one of the great views in Westport, Bayside has always been good neighbors. Over the years, they have been repeatedly been sensitive to many neighborhood issues, communicated clearly and quickly responding to many neighbors' concerns. Besides serving outstanding food, the restaurant supports and features local farms that are important to Westport's uniqueness. Over the 30 years I've had a house on Third Street, I've always felt that Bayside has been a benefit to the neighborhood. Lastly, Ronald and Betsy Small, 1233 Horse Neck Road. We are sending this message in support of Bayside petition that will be discussed on May 1, 2024. The Bayside petition to allow seating near the fire pitch should not change anything. They are not expanding the deck and as far as I am aware, that part does not affect parking. The restaurant has, in a small family for many years, in the Carroll family for 50 years, and has always had the public and customers' best interest in mind. This is Ronald and Betsy Small. I wanted to read it into record rather than just submitting it to record so that everybody understands, you know, exactly where the neighbors stand. Voting on this will be our...
Oh, what's his name?
The regular members of Jerry, Barbara, myself, Constance, and Ray. So with that, you can provide any updates to what you had provided recently.
Thank you, Mr. Menard. So first, I want to introduce here today with me, in addition to Kat, is Bob Feingold, who had originally submitted the petition, as well as our engineer, Peter Cruz. He's here to go over the plans and answer any technical questions that you may have. We did submit a plan within, at the normal time period before, that included a boulder wall and otherwise was similar here. But in response to some feedback and questions that we received through email from the board, we have revised that a bit to try to address some of the questions that were still outstanding, to add labels to the plan, and to see, you know, what more we can do to address the concerns that were raised at the last meeting. So I'm just going to summarize that briefly, and then I'll turn it over to Peter to go through the specifics and answer questions if you have any on those specifics. So the parking area here is the existing conditions plan. It's not adding or changing the existing parking. It's just laying out the number of spots that's available there. In terms of the expanded outdoor seating area, we came up with a plan to move that farther back from the road than was on the original revised plan that we had submitted. And rather than a boulder wall surrounding it, we made it more contiguous with the patio area and used what is in essence like the Jersey barrier type cement barriers to enclose that space more. And rather than leave them plain, the plan would be to beautify them a bit, you know, do some artwork, something decorative, and maybe flowers along the top, kind of like the railing that you might have over a deck post, that you can plant flowers around it.
So is that something like similar to like, what's it, like Lexi Lose?
I haven't seen what's it, Lexi Lose, I have to confess.
I was just there yesterday and I didn't notice what she has there for a jersey.
They have barriers because they also have outdoor seating. And they have barriers for their, for their outdoor seating.
Does it look kind of like a Jersey barrier, like you would see on a highway?
They're blue with their, they look, it's concrete barriers.
Yeah, and the detail is on the plan for the dimensions, the, you know, rough dimensions of the barriers and how they would be put in, and Peter can address that more. The other thing, in moving it back and making it slightly wider, we also created a space and added a couple of bicycle racks to encourage bicycles, you know, to be used rather than additional cars in the area. And the green area on the plan is just indicating where existing landscaping is. It's not going to be painted green or anything like that, but it's the landscaping area there. So with that in mind, Peter, do you want to go through the details? Did you guys have any questions for me before I?
No, but I mean, it's good that we got to this point because, you know, Jerry and I had talked about this after the last meeting. It was good that you provided these early enough that we could review them and provide comments so that you could clear those comments in this meeting rather than dragging up to another continuation. I think it's to all of our benefits to, you know, to clean this up as quickly as possible.
Absolutely, and we appreciate the opportunity to do so.
Okay, thank you, Adam. So the first page I just wanted to go through is show the overall site. I know there was a, one of the comments was to sort of label all the existing property line for the restaurant, which starts down at the Horse Neck Road and follows this standard line all the way through and down down the street. That is the actual property line for the actual restaurant. What we have here, this is the existing condition parking plan. As you can see, we supply 70 parking spots, one of the parking spots, inaccessible parking spot. I think one of the questions you guys asked was what was the required parking for the facility? And the calculation is down below. There's 36 parking spots, so we have almost double what is needed. And that calculation was based on the 82 seats that, what they're authorized to have. And per your bylaws, it's for every, what did you say? One space for every three seats. So that calculates out to be 28 spots. And then the employee parking, it's one spot for every two employees, roughly 16 employees at a peak height of season. So that all calculated out to be 36 parking spots.
You agree with that, Ralph?
It's just the handicap spots, I noticed you only got one. In the Architectural Access Book, it's one for every 25.
So you are correct, Adam. So we can add another accessible parking spot.
How many spots are already there, 70?
There is 70 total, correct.
There's 69.
69 plus one, one accessible.
One accessible, so I need two more accessible.
I think M A B is up to 75. Up to 75, between 51 and 75 is two spots.
One for every 25.
I'll check, but I thought it was...
One for every 25.
So we can definitely show that.
Excuse me, but Ralph, did you have a, up till now, did you have a formalized parking plan?
No.
So with that said, we can definitely...
So can we mark this on this plan so we can move forward?
Yeah, right there. We would, we would add, I believe it's one, but I'll double check the M A B. If it is two accessible spots, we can put them there. Is that all right with you, Kat?
Okay, so what we should do then, we'll mark up a master, one of these plans that goes to Maria. And then you guys sign it so that we, yep. Because this could be part of public record.
Okay. And we'll double check to see if it's three or two. So this is, this is just laid out to, to better talk about the actual space itself.
Can you go back to the first sheet? Because the thing always that confused me when I look at it, around the north side that you have a double, you have those double lines all the way around, and it was always confused, yes, all the way around, looks like a bicycle path almost.
So this, the double line, there's two property lines here.
Okay.
This is the butter's property line. This, this is the restaurant's property line. And then this is an actual property that's set back out in here. It's, it's another lot.
So that doesn't...
And their frontage is on Horse Neck Road.
Is that right? So that little strip of land is owned by somebody in the back?
Yes, it's a dream lot, yep.
Oh, okay, now it makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Not right.
Not right. Okay.
Do you want me to talk about it?
Yep.
Sure. I see the new drawing has our property line.
Name and address, please.
Norman Buck, 1 Eastern Circle.
Right. Yep.
This is our property.
Okay, so the...
This line is part of our property. It's not a line. Okay, so this line should not be on there. I see that the updated drawing, they put our property line marked down there, even though there's dimensions running off of here to the other property. And this, this property line doesn't exist.
Okay.
And this, this piece coming down here to run back, we don't have it in there. We own the whole field back there.
Is there any contention with that?
Can I speak to this?
Yes, go ahead.
So my mom, Catherine's 5E, 140 East Road. My mom Nancy owns the property, the lot in question, it's Zero Horse Neck Road. There's, they call it a rat's tail, a 10-foot wide strip from Horse Neck Road with 150 feet of frontage along Horse Neck Road that leads back to our property. That's what that is.
This should end right here.
It does, it does. It does. So this is your property line, the inside.
And then our, this, this property line is inside, this line does not exist. Is there a red flag for it?
I guess there's some contention that, does it do, is there any contention with their property line?
Their property line as shown on here is correct.
Okay, that's, I think that's, you know...
This other line as shown connecting down to the...
It's outside the lot. For us, that's extraneous because it's outside of their property.
But it's shown connecting to the rat tail going down there, which is not correct.
No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Clear enough? Go ahead.
Do you want me to go through the details here?
Yes. So you show up on the top the, uh...
So we have the precast concrete single face barrier, which is also known as the Jersey barrier. This is what we're proposing for the outdoor seating in this area.
So it's going to go, it's going to be like a U shape all around it?
Yep. Hatchet area here is the outdoor seating, which is set back 20 feet from the edge of roadway, 10 feet off the property line.
Okay.
And then we are also proposing concrete curb stops on these six spots here. And then along the face on Horse Neck Road, the parking, there are eight spots, we're also calling for concrete curb stops there. The folder detail, we're putting that where the bike racks are going, so no one actually can pull in and park in there. So that will be blocking off that area so that it can be utilized for folks that want to show up with their beach bikes to have lunch or dinner. And then the other detail is the actual rack that will be used.
Okay.
This is just a more zoomed in image of the, of just the parking, the restaurant, and the actual seating. So we show the existing parking, the all seven spots. We do show some cable setups of the seating. And we show the bike racks, some of the landscape that is in green. Is there anything specific that you would like to talk about while this one's up?
Couple of things. I see here the waiting area within, within the Jersey barrier?
Correct.
Okay, what does that consist of? That's just a bench?
I think that's the, the intent would be a bench that someone shows up, talks to the hostess, and is looking to get a table. They would be able to sit at one location designated away from the travel waitress or waitstaff to be able to serve those tables.
The, is that sufficient size to meet the demand of people waiting? It looks like it'd only take maybe four people sitting on that bench.
It's pretty wide, it's the, it's the whole landscape area. So, I mean, it's almost, this area right here is almost 30 feet long.
Yeah.
And then...
Maybe we're looking at two different things.
There's one area here that's a waiting, waiting area.
There's two of them.
And then you have one along the Jersey barrier.
Okay, so between the two, you think you've got enough. Now, will there be people standing and milling about with their drinks?
Only within the allowed parameters, not outside of...
Within the Jersey barrier area?
That is, eventually, the intent would be to allow people in that area.
Right now, the alcohol license is only for the patio area. That would be, we can't seek to amend that until we have a, something finalized here. So right now, we're just talking about the patio area for the drinks, under the existing situation.
Right, but the intent would be that this extra area would also accommodate some of the people waiting.
Yes, and, and be more constrained, you know, than it was in the past.
More defined.
But that's subject to approval from the select board.
Correct, that's not part of the existing, you know, petition.
And then I'm curious, when we spoke on the phone, we were still talking about boulders and smaller rocks and so forth. What, what made this change to Jersey barriers?
I think in discussion with you and the safety concerns that you and others had...
Did you find out more about the safety, whether there were...
So the boulder barrier was really picked for more aesthetics to sort of be with...
Which I'm concerned about.
Yeah, which was picked just to fit with the neighborhood. You had the stone wall next door. It was being used for aesthetic purposes. From a safety standpoint, it's hard to certify something that, you know, that what you guys are looking for. So we went to a Jersey barrier, which is a safety, I mean, each piece is 10 feet long and weighs about 4,000 pounds. It is going to get towed in, it's not just going to be left on the existing ground. We're going to, we're going to tow it in about 10 inches. It does get all pinned together, so it's a...
Pretty safe.
To address your safety concern, we went with a more robust...
And that's, that's a pretty standard application. And you can always put plants in front of it to beautify it, that's...
Ralph, we had talked on the phone about it, to check with you to find out, are there any safety regulations, you know, like there are building regulations? Is there something like this?
It's more of a safety thing, and the engineers addressed it with these barriers. So it's not really a building code. Part of somehow the look at this was being built new.
See, our concern when Roger and I spoke was the potential of the town having any liability. If we formally approve a plan like this and then somebody unfortunately happens to get hurt because something happens there, we, we didn't want the town to become liable. So that's why when I spoke with Peter, we were wondering whether they, the state or feds or whatever, had any kind of regs for that safety.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Unless they're installed on state property.
So just common sense?
Just common sense.
Would seem to think that this would be okay. Personally, I don't care for Jersey barriers, but, you know, they, like he says, up a Lexi Lose, I believe they just set on...
They just set on it on a pavement that's there.
And it's not very pretty.
No.
We can make ours pretty.
You're going to make it pretty?
I have faith in that, yes.
I appreciate that.
We hate plants, you know, we can, we can get creative with that.
Get around it.
And that's really up to you.
Right.
Right.
Well, I mean, we've all seen in the news how many times people have run into Dunkin' Donuts in people's houses or whatever. So it's not a, it's not a way out theory. I mean, this, this happens like every day. So, you know, people sit, you know, so we, that's the reason why we were concerned about that, that open area where, you know, you know, within a few feet of Horse Neck Road.
It's not an if, it's a when.
What's that, please?
It's not an if, it's a when it's going to happen.
Right, right, so the Jersey barriers, that's, you know...
I disagree with the contention in one of the letters that said the chances, you know, one.
The instruct by law, we do see this every weekend on the news, so... So far, we're using...
No, 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 we're not, okay. We'll wait for public until we get through with our comments.
Okay.
So, just remind, remember what you were going to say.
It would just address your issue, that's all, about aesthetics.
Okay. So, I mean, there's really not much more. I'll click to the next page, which is just a more zoomed in image of the extended outdoor seating area, which shows that it's only about, from, from the Jersey barrier over, it's roughly about 23 and a half feet. We made it 47 and a half to be able to encompass the area to sort of keep everyone sort of within this space, coming off the ramp and you're sort of in here and you have a lot more control with the patrons coming in and out and grabbing a table. We are going to expand this rock area here, just to sort of block off anyone from coming into the bike path. So the green space will stay, we'll add some more stones to the pile that's there. This one will actually stay. Jerry, you wanted me to sort of label the utility pole. The utility pole, actually with this, the way we have it set up actually helps everyone. It's sort of out of the way, I think there was some concern of it getting hit. And now it's out of the way because you're literally parking at a 90-degree angle, you're backing out and getting out on Horse Neck Road. So it's a, I think this plan, the layout, works very efficient for the site and also for the restaurant itself.
Yeah, the bigger concern for the utility pole being shown was just a matter of perspective. So what you see relative to where things were.
Can you point out where the Jersey barriers are going to be?
Can I use your highlighter?
Yeah, of course.
I'm pleased to see the bike, the bike parts.
The top right, that's also going to be Jersey barrier.
So you're meaning to access into the area here or here?
No, no, go back where you were coming in.
Where your figure was, right there.
Stop, right there.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I can understand, I mean, that's, that's good. I, I like it.
I think that concludes our presentation. Anyone have some comments?
Remember that, that what this is, is a finding. And a finding in accordance with our, with our regulations is, is more detrimental to the neighborhood from, but from a lawyer's standpoint, it is, it is primarily things like safety and traffic and things like that, not architectural. So how they want to beautify their Jersey barriers is, is not really a finding issue. It's an architectural issue.
Right. But there is a, can affect the neighborhood, especially down there.
Right.
Mr. Cameron, I'd just like to make two comments, Robert Feingold. The way this is designed, shell area, has much more control over the flow of patrons. And that's a very positive thing. And Mr. Cutino, there's a document called sovereign immunity, which should allay your concerns about the town being sued because it approved the Jersey barriers. That should protect the town. And I've never heard of a suit like that. But even if there were, it's a sovereign immunity and the town has insurance. So I think you can relax.
What does that mean?
Sovereign immunity? Basically, you can't sue the government unless, with, there are certain exceptions, but I don't think this would be a big one. And even if you can... And even if you can, the amount of money is very small. So, I don't think you have to worry about it.
And you know how these lawyers are, right?
They're awful. I'm glad you put together this, uh, expanded view with us. This, this is really helpful.
So, what's the normal setback?
Forty-five feet off the street.
Or a.
Or a structure.
For a structure, I don't need a structure.
Right, this does not apply with the twenty-five, because Roger and I talked about that, and, uh, it'd be like putting a stone wall around your property.
Right, right. As, as long as it's done in the layout of the road.
Yeah. And, um, the, um, another thing that we did with this was show the number of people at per table on here that wasn't before. And we did clarify what that square thing was. Rod, Roger and I, that square thing within the seating was just a square thing. We didn't know whether it was a.
Bigger table?
Yeah. It's a picnic table. Okay. Does it indicate?
It's the old, it's the old visual, I think.
You, you didn't make a note about that being a picnic table on the plan?
First drawing it's on there.
Oh, the first drawing, uh, the new drawing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Sheet, C one.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you really didn't have to put that information in there, because that's not really pertinent to this.
But it does have thirty seats total.
You know, just the, uh, whatever, eighty-two seats total for the restaurant.
Right, it's, it's intended to be flex, so long as there's eighty-two seats total for dining.
Right.
Right, so, you know, it's weather adjusted, as it's noted there. So, if something needs to go more back under the awning or outside.
Any, uh, yeah, I'm, I've, you've done a really good job of updating this. I, I think this has gone a long way. Any questions from the, uh, from the board before we open it up to the public?
Did, did we determine what the, those two bump outs were?
These?
Yeah.
Oh, that's the existing stone wall that's there. So, we're gonna be extend, extending the stone wall that's here to sort of close off this area and allow just the bike traffic through here. We're putting a boulder, boulder on either side so that folks don't drive into it, as like they think it's art to spot. So, we're, we're sort of fencing that off with these two boulders and these two, uh.
So, is it, um, is it a, actually a pile of rocks? Is it a, a, a little stone wall?
I think it's a placed wall.
Like briars and stuff like that?
So, there's, um, there's plants, and then on each end of the, the plants, there's like a, it's not like a stone wall.
So, it's not a square.
A pile of stones.
Yeah, it's not a square as that's showing. You know, that's showing like a, okay, well, we, we, we just didn't know what it was.
Yeah.
Okay. I went down and, you know, tried to figure it out, but I figured it was just a vegetation.
Yeah, it's kind of, um, on each end of the vegetation that's there.
Yeah.
I think y'all have done a great job in answering all the questions.
So, if there's no other questions from the board, I'll, I'll open it up to the public. So, you know, you had a comment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, can you come up and name an address?
My name is Steve Caton, and I'm a longtime visitor of that wonderful establishment, my favorite restaurant in the whole world, Bayside, and it's a wonderful family.
Yeah, but we're not open all year. What are you doing anywhere?
I know. Well, that's a good point, because their business model is, is they can make hay when the sun shines.
Right.
And this is only open to the public, um, for the period of time when people are willing to sit outside, you know, and that's just about now. When it starts to happen. So, and that's very weather dependent, so otherwise people are trying to get inside. But one thing that might have, uh, maybe been not touched on is the design aesthetic that this gentleman, um, um, brought up. And this would be very easily, as it begs, very easily covered with a veneer of stone to address that sort of relationship between the Audubon stonework across the street, which is wonderful, and sort of match that. So, with a base of, of the Jersey barrier, which accomplishes the, the safety aspect of it, that's what it's for. That's what they do. So, it's designed that set. Adding mass to that, a, a small veneer of that, a mason could just paint that out in no time at all, and it would look awesome. Um, on top of that could be planters that Kat had mentioned and stuff and such. And, and the design aesthetic could make it look very, like it's been there, you know, to match the adjacent masonry that's across the street. So, and it, that does make a difference, because someone wants to look at a Jersey barrier, and it's not gonna be painted with graffiti and, you know, you know, something like that. But that, so, you know, just to be sure that it would look awesome and be innovative, in addition, as opposed to, uh, you know, an eyesore, you know, for the neighbors and the community. It's, oh, like, because it hadn't been mentioned, and I thought maybe that, you know, might have been better, you know, sets of the Jersey barrier. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Sorry, again, I'm wrong, but I lived next door, uh, one of the students circle. I, uh, wanna say thank you. Thank you very much for laying out the drawing for the parking and the way it has been for the last eight years. It has worked for us, and I hope it's worked for you, and I hope the restaurant does well. I just wanna make sure that, I don't know who looks at these drawings later, but just make sure the rat tail that's on there is, uh, reconfigured so that, uh, there's no question about where the property lines are. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
My name's Dean Lelling from twelve third street, and I'd just like to say that the, uh, Bayside's been good neighbors for thirty-five years, and I've lived there. And I'm, I support this, this request there.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to go get a lobster roll right now.
I should have brought something.
It is dinner time.
You know, an extra butter.
And, and a dill pickle, right.
Yeah.
Hi, I just, my name's Dean Lelling from twelve third street. I just wanted to touch on the safety concerns that I heard mentioned before. Um, I've got a couple of daughters I've been bringing down through the parking lot for a long time, for like, you know, twelve years and longer than that, infant stages. I've never had a problem. I mean, there's never been any issues with safety. And it's a very positive thing, I, in my opinion. So, I'm a hundred percent behind it.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I, I'd like to, uh, make a contingent upon them opening throughout the winter.
Jerry, what about breakfast?
Yeah.
I mean, one of the things, when, when we were under COVID restrictions, there's been a few places you could go and order a lobster salad, sandwich, and have it, and, and go pick it up and actually have one. I mean, that's, I mean, they were very, very, uh, supportive, you know, during the, the COVID pandemic.
Some of our nicest memories, uh, regarding Bayside was, uh, many times in the wintertime, when there weren't a lot of people around. Um, and it was stormy and really messy, and we'd be down there, and, and it was like a family, just get together. It was, you know, really nice, but I miss that.
You only live about a mile away, so you're, so you only live about a mile away.
Right, well.
I, I concur, Jerry. I used to go, uh, uh, for Valentine's Day, but that's no longer an option.
So, why do you stop the, so you have the car stops, but you stop the stops after a certain period of time? Up on, especially around number twelve? Like, from twelve, like, do you look at the twelve parking spaces there on the, to the right of the patio?
Here?
Yeah. I mean, you still have, you still have seating there, so I don't understand why you didn't, you didn't.
So, the original intent for the car stops was, it was the first main.
Right.
Uh, protection, if, if a car did get loose and, uh, ended up impacting it. So, it would be the first impact, and then you'd have, you had the Jersey barrier. So, that's the only reason I only went up six. And then, on the front, we, we only went up to the, uh, the sixth spot because of deliveries to be able to back down and take deliveries.
Any other comments, questions?
And I believe the other thing is, is this, this landscape area has tenders all over it. So, it almost acts as a concrete stop also.
If there's no comments, then I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
We have a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. All that means is now the, the board will deliberate, uh, don't take any more information from the public unless, unless, uh, we need something, uh, expanded upon or resolved. Uh, I, you know, I think this has been a really good improvement from the, from the original, you know, uh, with the improved, uh, safety issues, which was really our, our only main, uh, concern, was that this being so close to Horse Neck Road, and knowing, you know, watching the news how many times people run into places they shouldn't be, uh, I think this, from my viewpoint, this pretty much solves that issue, and, you know, I, I don't see any, any, any issues with it at all.
I think everything's positive.
I agree.
So, um, any, any discussion before, no? Uh, let's entertain a motion then. Okay, I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion, let me see. Let me use the. Uh, first of all, you have no issue then with the, uh, the additional handicap parking spaces?
No.
Okay. Cause that, that would be on the revised plan.
Yes.
We'll, we'll annotate that plan, and that will be part of the motion.
Just need to clarify it's two or three. That's the only thing I need.
Ralph, you're sure it's three?
Sure, it's three.
It's three.
One for every twenty-five. They're at seventy spaces.
So, let's mark it as three. You got it?
I just wanna look on the web right away.
You could cover that in, in the motion by, uh, indicating that the number of handicap will be as required by regulation?
Hasn't the.
Well, all we know is we wanna update the plan.
Yeah.
Hasn't the parking been the same, right along? So, isn't it grandfathered at that point?
We're, we're making it, we're, we're defining the plan.
We're defined, right. So, are you looking up something up back there, or?
Yeah, that's what he's doing.
Yep, three. I got it.
So, is it based on total, or is it based on the requirement?
One for every twenty-five spaces. You've got seventy spaces. Twenty-five is one space, fifty is two spaces, and because you went over, it's three spaces.
Okay.
So, let it be written, so let it be done.
So, any issue with that?
No.
Okay. Okay, so I will make a, a motion to grant the, um, let me see, is this to continue, uh, to, to grant the finding that expanding the outdoor seating area to include a non-deck shelled area approximately eighteen hundred square feet in front of the existing wooden deck, where seating had existed for a long time shall not be substantially more detrimental than existing non-conforming use of the neighborhood as mandated by zoning law, Article Five, Section five point two three. Subject property located at twelve fifty-three Horse Neck Road, rest board mass, and is shown on assessments map lot seventy-six, lot forty. And, uh, the, uh, uh, the only condition being that the, uh, that the, uh, that the, the plans provided and modified at this meeting become part of the public record.
Second up.
Any comment?
Yeah, yes, I, I would like to, uh, suggest that you consider revising your, um, motion to, uh, the twelve hundred and seventy.
Yeah, it says, it says eighteen hundred, I, I think maybe we could say not to exceed, or.
Yeah, yeah, so, so this is the twelve seventy, so that, so that it matches.
So that it matches. Do you have any issue with that? Cause.
No.
Okay, so rather than what you asked for is approximately eighteen hundred square feet, you're really asking for twelve hundred and seventy square feet.
Yeah. Or we could even say approximately twelve seventy.
Approximately twelve hundred and seventy. Any performance with the plans provided today? So, with that amendment, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
No, second time.
Any, any discretion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. The record shows unanimous. There is a twenty-day waiting period, so we'll go building stuff for twenty days, and, you know, and, uh, hopefully in a while, we'll be, we'll all be there and having lobster salad sandwiches at, at your restaurant.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peter, make sure she hears. So, Peter, make sure.
She already locked up a smaller than one, Martin.
Whatever you need.
Smaller one is fine.
So, Jerry, for what it's worth, before, before I did this tour, I was a tort lawyer in Rhode Island and worked on catastrophic injury cases, drunk driving cases, grand shot cases, station nightclub fire was one of my first cases that I worked on, and so, I understand your concern about, about that, and was definitely wanting the safety issue to be considered, to be addressed. As a matter of.
I think it worked out.
You're a plaintiff lawyer, I can't help it.
All right, can we clear the area, please? We saw more businesses being. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, uh, next order of business is approval of meeting minutes for April ten, twenty twenty-four. Maria's put together, uh, meeting minutes. We've all reviewed them, commented on them, and I, and I assume Maria, you've incorporated the comments. So, I will make a motion to approve the April ten, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes as provided by, by Maria. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. That's, uh, it's unanimous, so I'll sign this. I have one here from February, but I assume I, I signed that maybe tomorrow anyway?
Yeah, that's, I think that's your copy.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's one that's usually, you give me a, um.
Oh, I guess how I did.
And this one's.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, but, um, are there any other, there is, um, I assume you all realize that next Tuesday is the, um, pounding? Is the, uh, the articles for the town meeting that really have copies of, of which there are some zoning issues. The one is the short-term rental, and the other is the rezoning for, essentially the new sixth corridor. That's next Tuesday at, uh, seven at the, uh, at High School.
Seven o'clock, new high school or old high school?
The middle, the high school, whatever they call it. The new middle high.
The new, yeah. Um, are there any other, any other business that, uh, oh, I, there is one thing, Ralph. Can you give us an update on whatever's happening with the Enrol property on Brick Road, if anything?
Nothing.
Have we, I mean, we've been through this with them now a couple of times. Are they still under a stop order?
To, to, to build it, it's supposed to be empty. Do a status on it.
Yes, would you please do that?
I think the, the only way we're gonna get them to do anything is to start finding them.
Yes. Yes, yeah, so if you can, if you can do that.
If there's somebody in it, then it's a zoning violation.
Yes, right. So, we're having another meeting at the end of May, so maybe we can report that at the end of May? Thank you.
Could I ask Ralph a, a question, just so we, we can all be educated and understand? Ralph, in the past, you've indicated that, if I owned a vacant piece of property, and I came to you to get a building permit for a barn or a workshop or something, and there's no residents on this property, right? I, I understood that, um, you couldn't issue that.
That's, that's what I got at a meeting in this room. There was a, a, a question on a piece of property because it had. There was a question on a piece of property because it had no, it had no residents on it. It couldn't be built on unless it met the requirements of 150 foot, 460,000 square feet.
Okay.
So if the lot was undersized, they have to come before this board, the way I understood it for you people. Now, this is going back a ways now.
Yeah.
But it had to come to this board, pretty much on a fairing or a finding that they could do it, provided something was gonna come later on.
Okay, so the instance that I just mentioned, assuming there are setbacks and all that, you could do that.
If you, if you had 150 foot, 460,000 square foot lot and you came to me and you said, I want to build a garage on that lot, I could give you a permit because the lot conforms to the lot size, as long as the structure that's gonna go on it meets the setbacks. The problem arose when a predecessor of mine issued a permit to a property on the Sanford Road area that was a vacant lot.
That might be mine.
It was a vacant lot. And it caused commotion because they put a garage on it. The trouble, what it was, was the garage drew, the stuff to it drew like the guy wanted to be due because he thought he was within the range of Route 6. He thought it was a commercial zone. So most people think Sanford Road is mostly all commercial, but it's not. It only comes in both S177 and Route 6, that's it. The rest of it is existing, non-conforming, whatever commercial's in there. So I, there's a few places on Sanford Road I have problems with once in a while. There's two of them I'm watching right now.
But in general.
In general.
You can do it. And then if the person chooses to build a house on the property later, that's okay, but it's also not necessary.
Not necessarily restricted because the lot doesn't meet the requirements.
Yeah, because we, the reason I'm bringing it up is because we've had a lot of times, even with, when our attorney, town attorney's here, that you, a garage or such building is considered to be an accessory to the property.
To something that's.
And he's indicated to us, if there's no house.
Right.
It can't be accessory.
It's not accessory.
There's nothing to be accessory to. So I'm trying to get that clear in my mind.
I got a piece of property that my town record card says accessory dwelling and that's all I've got. I mean, you can't put a house on, there's no place you can put a septic, so.
What I've been doing is if they've got something like that, they apply for a permit and I deny it, they can appeal me to this board.
Sure.
And then let this board decide, well, we'll let them have that structure and that's all they can have.
Sure.
Do it that way. Because it was, it was the thing brought up a while back, it was a while back.
Thank you.
This was when Clayton Harrison was chairman.
Any other business or discussion? No?
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second.
We're gonna have to go out for a little bit, we have training, we gotta practice.
All opposed, no. He is adjourned.